Yeah. I hereby declare the meetings open. Call the call the meeting order of the Finance Committee Standing Committee of this Cambria Community Services District Board of Directors. Welcome, everybody, to our our first in-person meeting in what, three years? Something like that. We're we're also doing this remotely as well as in person. And I'll have a few words to say about that in my chairman's report, some of the procedures we want to follow. For now, though, I want to note that there's a quorum. All five members of the committee are present. And the chairman's report is going to be about a little bit about process today because we're we're in a different different mode. We have we have some materials and at least one one item that was not that came in too late to be included in the agenda that's online. And that's a Q and A regarding the skate park grant proposal. What I will do, if anybody needs to see it who's remote, I will give you my email. And if you want to see it, you want to see a copy, but I can send you a copy of it as an attachment to an email. So what I'll do while we're I'm on this report is I'll give you my email, my Cambria email, which is T gray, T G R E Y at Cambria C S D dot org. And if you want a copy of the Q and A, just send me an email with the subject line saying skate park Q and A, and I'll get it to you. But by the time we're doing that item, we're not doing that right away. But that's what I'll have to handle is, and I think there's about six of you out there in in remote land. And so please do that if you wish to see it, we will be discussing it. So you may not want to have that need a copy, but we will be discussing it. That's good to have a copy in hand. And because of, you know, everybody should be able to see it is being discussed. Another item I wanted to ask the committees input on permission on is to make a slight change in the order of the items. Normally, three eight, three eight courses, the continuation of the deliberation about the skate park grant proposal. And normally that goes first. But the item three C, which is discussion and appointment of ad hoc subcommittee regarding review of reserve policy. It pertains to an issue which informs the discussion on the skate park. The skate park loan, I mean, skate park grant. So that my request is that we put that in the first position, three C, and then follow it with three A. I need the unanimous consent of the committee on that. If anybody objects, please let me know. Do all you do all you agree with that? Excellent, excellent. So we start, we will start after after the start of regular business, we'll start with three C, then we'll move directly to three A. Are there any committee member communications announcements, brief reports on your activities or questions for clarification? Hearing none. I want to I'll open up the meeting to public comment. I have a couple of written comments that I I will read. But at first, I want to find out if anybody either online and there was remotely or in the in the audience here wishes to make a public comment on items not on the agenda. Seeing no reaction. Anyone in the by by Zoom want to make a comment on an item not on the agenda? Can you hear me, by the way? Okay, thank you. Okay, no items there. I have actually two short comments that were issued that were submitted last month, which I neglected to read. Then I have another written comment. And I have two written comments, but they're both pertaining to item three A. So I'll just read the two short comments I had that were not related to any any agenda item that that came in on February twenty eighth, the February twenty eighth meeting. I get the other two when we get to three A. The first is from Linda Prentice. And it's a brief one, it says, please consider allowing fifty water meter holders to build each year for two years to test the effect on the water supplies. Thank you. And this one is for the Finance Committee on the twentieth of February. From also from Linda Prentice. Please consider reducing the property tax amount for vacant land to maybe half the amount for properties used daily, weekly, et cetera. Thank you for your considerations. And that is all the written comments I had on items not on the agenda. The first one is for Linda Prentice. Please consider allowing fifty water meter holders for each year for two years to test the effect on the water supplies. Thank you. It's it was, yeah. Don, oh, in the audience, Don. On Zoom, yes, Harry Farmer, Jeffrey Smith, Linda Finley, Michael Calderwood, Michael Thomas, and Sherrod Tatum. We have to move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the regular meeting minutes for February twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. Does anyone have any changes or additions or corrections in minutes? Please, Karen.
This is not regarding your content on page five. I'm going to navigate on the page and if you're going to start stuff, you'll notice the second sentence ends because budget preparation began in April and period. I just think the word and needs to go away.
This is noted that there is under C, right?
Yes, the third paragraph under C.
Oh, I see, yeah. You have to make that change. I had also one change to note, this is on page four, it's an under item B, regular business fee, the second paragraph from the from the bottom, where it says there was further discussion about the need earmarked funds for this project than the general fund well advanced with three to five year construction debt timeline. Ms. Duffield noted that CCSC has had almost one hundred seventy eight thousand in CCC funds that could be used as part of the matching grants for this project. Those funds are CCSD funds. And it basically say we cut CCC out of there because those are the CCSD funds that were committed apart from the CCC fund. So maybe just the word CCC admitted would make it fine. So those two corrections were noted. Any others? It's on it's on bottom of page four, just just you had to come up. Can I have a motion for approval of the minutes as correctly? Vice Chair Sidell?
I'll say.
Seconded by Secretary Wyatt, removed, seconded to approve minutes. So I have a show of hands on this. Unanimously approved, thank you. Five votes. Moving on now to three B, three C, right, a three C, we'll skip a little bit. The reason I brought this up, I wanted this earlier is that it is it's a short item because we're just talking about really appointing an ad hoc committee. But it is relevant to the larger item, I guess, the more media item we're discussing today. This has to do with reserve policy and to review it essentially. I noticed in reading the the policy that we have in our in our packet that the part of the policy is to have an annual review, which is, I think, is useful because I think the policy itself, I find to be very actually pretty detailed and fairly specific about the types of reserves that are we have. And and how and the and the priority for those types of reserves, for instance, working capital contingency, you know, liability contingency, budget stabilization, that sort of thing. And and they have ranges for each of those categories. The the issue has been, I think, one of the problems we've had or when things aren't isn't being done, we we don't get in that level of specificity. When we talk about reserves, we in recent times, reserves have been pretty much talked about as a as a fold as a just a single number for general fund, a single number for waste water, a single number for water. And I think review is good, both to see if our practice is in line with this policy and if anything needs to be changed in this policy to either reflect new new circumstances or to adjust to our practice that might make sense. In other words, reviewing reviewing the policy and also reviewing our adherence to the policy. So that's what I think we're talking about here. And the reserves themselves, we will be talking about in terms of overall numbers in three A. So my request with this, before we get on to more, you know, get into more others, other subjects is to ask for volunteers for, say, a two member, we could just have a two member ad hoc committee who want to be on this committee. Vice Chair Sidell and Karen Christman.
And what's the difference between reserves and set of sounds?
I could ask, well, first of all, yeah, I could ask Ms. Fritz, Ms. Fritz, that, yeah, Denise, that.
So what do you mean by?
Yeah.
Where the money is allocated for a project.
That would be part of the reserves, it was just become restricted. Preserves, that's what we would make a lot of it. And we've set it aside for a specific purpose, but it would be part of the research. Policy. So it would be, yeah, correct. We would need to write something into the reserve, it's probably already there about you know, when we set something aside and how to do that.
Before we get to
Just a different term. And that that someone may use in a different circumstance to set aside the same thing as restricting reserve.
Yes.
There are two types of reserves broadly speaking, and and reserve policy will love the detail about these different kinds of reserve, are unrestricted reserves and how they're allocated, how they're how they're what the what the what the the ranges are for each of them. Restricted reserves are things that are already committed. For instance, I would say the being back to the skate park, if I'm not correct, if I'm not mistaken, the one hundred seventy eight thousand is a restricted, essentially, we call it restricted reserve. Whereas what we're what we're talking about today, in addition to that, is taking money out of unrestricted reserves temporarily.
Yes, and if you, you know, look at the finance managers' report monthly, we have that unrestricted restricted number and the details aren't here. But, you know, an large scale of wastewater bond fund money is on is restricted reserves. But it is shown as as money.
Before we go on, is there any public comment on this issue? Okay. I think the prerogative of the chair is to appoint the ad hoc committee, who I hereby appoint Chair Vice Chair Sidell and Karen Christman to the new ad hoc committee with the task of reviewing the the reserve policy, reporting back the can next month, at the next meeting, on what either might be might need changing, adjusting, so forth. Just basically review. And to see how and see we need, I, you know, I I would suggest one thing, the way we report reserves might be might reflect more of what these actual the actual policy is to be useful. Okay, thank you.
By the way, because we're going to be looking at the reserves as a policy today, and it was part of the package. I did take a look at amounts held in reserve for the general fund where it talks about three categories. And there's a range there of ten to fifteen percent on stabilization, fifteen to twenty on the liability safety disaster and intended to mean on the working capital. And in in evaluation, generally, you would take what's the current budget is. And then look at what that is or find those as percentages against that number. With the the numbers that I ran, which are not guaranteed, but the the ten to fifteen percent station for the budget stabilization, the range of basically four hundred eighty four K to five hundred twenty six or seven hundred twenty six. And for the liability, it's fifteen percent, twenty percent, which is a range of seven hundred and twenty six K, five hundred and sixty seven K. And working capital is in the ten fifteen, so again, the one hundred eighty four to seven twenty. And if you add all of those together as elements, it says that you should be carrying reserves for the general fund in the range of one point five million to two point four million. So just as a point of reference, it isn't, it isn't a point of decision, but I was just curious to see with these kinds of percentages and things that we consider as far as where we take the general fund in consideration of the ridiculous three A, I was just curious where that was found out.
Well, yeah, no, this is also the question of what which which part of the which part of the reserve category reserve we're going on to and which category reserves, you know, has more higher priority. There's a there's a priority, there's a priority order in that policy, too. That's a question that we're talking, we're talking about, too, actually, the A. Any other comments on this, just before we go on?
Would you like me to start about meetings for that?
Yes, please. Like, like, I, like, like we did with the 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 other other ad hoc committee, which we'll be reporting later today. As I said, any any public comment, is any comment from the from Zoom land? I don't see any hands. A little new, I'm a little new to this laugh pocket, so if I don't see a hand raised, shout out, okay, don't. So on the item three A, which continues what we were doing last month. Some of the material I'm going to, before we get to staff, the staff report, which is kind of in two parts, it's in three, it's on the three A page, main page, and also on a page called skate park sources and uses, which was generated by the staff as well. Before we get to that, I wanted to just hopefully frame this for our discussion. There are and there are two items in this, there are two topics in this business item that we would probably take separate motions on because of the you know, one is actually more more broad in its focus and one is more narrow. The broad focused one is a revision or an amendment to the memorandum of understanding that CCSD has for Cambria Community Council having to do with the dispersment of funds and the obligations of the community council and the CCSD. We, Vice Chair Sidell and I conferred with Tim Carmel, our counsel, Tim Carmel, who proposed a amendment which would which would account for a situation where we are applying for a matching grant. It can be this one, it could be some other future situation. This is more general, a general amendment, and we can talk about that separately. The other question, of course, is whether to what to recommend regarding the current proposal that was before us for a to apply for a matching grant. And I'll just suggest to help frame it that there are three options essentially. One is, of course, not to apply for the grant and to keep everything status quo. The other is to apply for the grant as it was originally proposed and came from the starts and open space committee, which is for the based on an engineering cost of million twenty thousand four sixty one with a a match, fifty percent match of five hundred thirty five thousand. The other is is coming out of the discussion last month is to apply for a grant with a larger match to 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 hopefully hit a closer to the target of the actual costs. And that was, that's been suggested in this in the staff report here that we apply for a grant with a match which would cover a million two hundred thousand, which in other words would be a six hundred thousand dollar match. That would require more funds to be raised in the interim by skate Cambria and CCC as well as commitment of more of our reserves temporarily to the project. So there's to me, and just just to start start the discussion, there seem to be three general ways we could go with this. And with the and with the MOU amendment, they're basically either we approve it or we don't. So then that's pretty simple. Before we go on, I want to have staff, it would be Ray is online, I don't know if he wants to give the staff report or maybe Denise present the staff report, if any, any, he's here. Ray is Ray is online. Yeah. I'm going to ask Ray to speak, but let me see if I can, here he is, Ray, you're there now, right?
Yes, I'm here, I'm I I was, I was thinking that Denise was going to introduce the staff and we can, and I'm available for questions and so is Carlos.
Before I go on, can everybody here out there hear the, you on? So it sounds like Denise can start.
Never introduced a staff before. These are my first.
Debut here, excellent.
So I'd like to introduce agenda number three A, which is for discussion and consideration of the land and water conservation fund grant application of the this Cambria state park project. So I don't know typically if you give more detail than that, I thought we discussed this at the last meeting. So everyone here is pretty familiar with this project. And my understanding of this particular staff report, like you had mentioned, there's different perks, but then there is to consider applying for the grants for the land water conservation fund, which is a fifty fifty match. And at the time of application, we would have to commit our general fund reserve to to the project. And that's all outlined here. And then in this staff report, there's also information on the grant itself. And some information on the project. You know, the layout, the design and the cost. And we have, as you had mentioned, project costs were estimated at one point two million to, you know, kind of accommodate for inflation and increase of timing.
Thank you. Just Ray, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I think it's important to to note that the 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 increase of the the, you know, approximately one point two million, the the point there is to make it to to give us more availability for grant fund matching. It's 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 important to keep in mind that if if the district chooses to only match whatever skate Cambria puts up, you know, I I think that option is still on the table, even if we apply for a one point two million dollar. If we, even if we apply for one point two million dollars, it doesn't mean we're going to spend that much. But it does mean, though, for we do have to program it. But but as far as, you know, when the actual project is being constructed and built, you know, we we could, we could go below one point two or or possibly even go above. It doesn't, you know, those are, those are speculations at this point. But I it's important to note that the the decision before you hear is, you know, how much are we going to program this and commit the district funds to, you know, as basically earmarking the earmarking the the project because we at at the end, the the district will be reimbursed all that money since skate Cambria is going to provide the bulk of the match funding. So I just wanted to, hopefully, that that clarifies something, but, you know, I think it's it's the the staff report kind of outlines it, so.
Yeah. Anybody on the committee have any questions regarding the for either either Denise, Ray, or any other staff on this?
I'm sure you have three on the line. Estimate considering what the permitting isn't expected through the county until the end of twenty twenty four. According to the answers that were provided or the Q and A.
Yeah, realistically, realistically, that's still, that that would be my estimate still.
And and that estimate is based on the condition prior to the the recent rains, the recent dirt side and so forth that happened on the on the skate park area. So I'm assuming that there's going to be something that the county would expect or require in terms of taking a look at what the effects of that were and or what the condition of the hillside is because frankly, the skate park area wasn't the only area that was affected by that, a library closed for a period of time. There's so many to turn that upstairs parking area. So I guess number one, do you have any expectation of what would be required now from the county, how many tables of that or what potential brings or additional testing that would be required that would extend that timeframe beyond twenty twenty four?
So, yeah, anytime there's, you know, anytime there's a new, I guess, finding, if you will, you know, that that, yeah, it would, it would definitely trigger some kind of an investigation. It's they haven't, they they haven't, they haven't asked us of that yet. But but it's kind of like no, because it's kind of like a, it's it's somewhat new information and, you know, but part of which is like, you know, when when even even with the library, when they designed the wall, you know, they they designed it so that, you know, it would protect them from any kind of landslide like that. So they're they're probably going to look at that. But but again, you know, it's it's not something that that's been asked of us or, you know, or or, you know, it's it's even hard to tell if 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 limits of the project will be affected because, you know, we do, we did intend to, there is going to be a wall as part of the design. And could that could that new wall would have prevented that 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 little slot landslide from, you know, getting into the skate park, you know, it's hard to tell. Part of part of the schedule, part of the scheduling, too, is, you know, the the there there are, we we need to get on the the different commission schedules. And those are, those have long lead times, and that's part of the estimate that I gave up as as far as you know, when I expect the permit to be, you know, you know, when when we expect to get the permit, that that was all what I was considering is is this that estimate.
So would it be, would it be at least reasonable to say that there would be risks associated with that name being met with the chance that we'd be required to do some additional actions by the county?
Yeah, there's there's service, yes.
So with with that in mind and with the actual construction timeframe, the engineering and the construction timeframe, can you provide some kind of projection as to when the skate park will be completed?
I that would be hard to tell, I mean, because I I think like, once we have the permit in hand and, you know, assuming that all of those conditions are met, you know, with within the design. And what when once the actual bids have also come back from the contractors, you know, we're looking at a construction window, I'm estimating only about six months. I I don't see it going beyond that. So there there aren't any construction windows, for example, you know, that that would affect it like environmentally. So that that's why it would be just straight construction. And, you know, typically this type of construction, like, okay, I'm not, I'm not an expert on on skate park construction, but this type of construction doesn't go like much longer than a year. So so assuming we get permits in hand, and I think I think well, well, the the construction window will be in time for for when we expect to get the grant because we can, we actually can't break ground until we have the the grant in hand. So and I believe, you know, there was a possibility that it can be late twenty twenty four and even early twenty twenty five.
But so do you do you think that the need for obtaining a, which is a section one oh six that was described as, you know, part of the requirements according to the grant, that that has to happen at the very end? And and basically, it won't be considered complete and show that's that section is done and that section has to go through state and federal agencies. Do you see that as extending the time period?
No, I, I don't see that as a, a reason to extend the time period.
Yeah, I had a question about the, talking about the timing, the timetable. Uh, this may be sort of slightly more subjective, but in the, and for what you know, the grant application process and grant application requirements, is there a benefit or drawback depending on the case of how far along the project is towards being shovel ready? Because it sounds like this project in terms of timing is, is still in the permitting, obviously the permitting phase. And it's not, you know, would be, as, you know, as Cindy's questions kind of brought out, the permit will kind of happen about the time that the, um, the money would be available anyway. But we, we, until then, it's, the project is still rather tentative and preliminary in terms of the, of the scope and engineering and everything. Is, is there anything in the, in the application process and the application requirements that would favor or disfavor the project on that basis?
I, I think the, the schedule that, uh, that the grant has out, you know, the, the, their proposed schedule for, for, for us getting the grant actually matches the design and permitting of, of our project. I think like by the time that, that money would become available to us would be right around the time that we're ready to construct. I, but my, my original concern was I, my original concern was pushing the project out farther because of waiting for the grant, but I think, you know, it's reasonable to assume that that all of these will align just in time, you know, we'll get, we'll have money in hand right as around the time we're ready to break ground, because you know, they're, they're, they're talking, you know, late twenty twenty four through late twenty twenty five. So if, if we kind of put that right in between, you know, i- it's going to be right around the time we're ready to.
David, you have a question?
Yeah, based upon my previous experience, this project is shovel ready. We have a design, we have people on board, we have a permitting process begun. This would be considered a shovel ready project by almost anybody that will be looking at it for funding, so using which.
Okay, uh, before we go on.
The, the reason I was asking the questions in that is that one consideration in terms of the idea of money's coming back to CCSD from this restricted reserve that is, there is a twenty percent holdback that, uh, it cannot be paid back to us until this, until skate park is complete, so it isn't just skate park. It's the sidewalks, it's the bathroom, it's the sign off on the one oh six, it's everything. Put a bow on a standard, it's open and those funds will be held, that twenty percent fund will be held until then. And it isn't as, it isn't the significant one million dollars, it's just that it's something that uh, we need to be aware of, it's just an element of, of what's in process and, and is, has a slight risk associated with it in just the instant.
Thank you. So if we have no more questions from the board in terms of informational questions, well, question yes. We'll get the discussion, but the question yes, for the staff.
I just was curious, upon a final, I think Cindy's referred to a final inspection with all these contingencies that you're referring.
Well, my expectation is that the final inspection, yes, but there, there are things that have to happen beyond that, that are requiring grant to validate completion of the project. And final inspection may be a document or maybe a set point in time that would be able to provide that validation, but there are actually some go beyond that.
But the, the question here is a time limit to submit an application with sufficient funds. I think that's the thing that has to, we have to come to some kind of understanding is that you have till June thirtieth to submit a grant application. And if it is done in a timely manner, then this whole thing gets kicked, the can gets kicked down the road and it may not have this opportunity again. And that's my thought is, let's get this going so you can submit an application and increase the MOUs and let's just go for it and let it ride. That's, that's my thought, Adam.
We can have conversation.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to that in a second. I, I had one more question, Ms. Amadeus, we'll, we'll get to public comment very shortly. Uh, I have one more question on the money, uh, money figures. I want to make sure I'm clear on, on the, um, this is on three, page fifteen, uh, the skate park sources and uses that the, uh, I'm a little confused.
There's an error on the bottom that did not, that I caught after it went to the agenda, so. As you can see, we're working through the numbers, so general fund committed at time of application, I was, I was projecting this to eight hundred and seventy one thousand seven hundred and fifty four dollars. At the reserve estimation part, I have down there nine fourteen one seventy four, so that it should be eight seventy one.
Should be the same.
My floor down below as well.
Both cases then, yeah.
Yeah, so my general fund balance estimated would be one point six two eight two four six million and I will send out an updated version of this to all of you.
Yeah, that's, that answers one question I had. The other one is, I want to make sure, this is the, um, the eight seventy one seven fifty four is, will be committed in restricted reserves essentially on the basis of the million two hundred.
Correct.
Figure, what would be the commitment if we went with the lower costs, a million two four? How would that change the commitment? The one from the, the, the original.
Oh, the one from millions.
Million, million sixty four, I'm not having it in front of me here, yes. What was that?
I mean, I would have to, um, do the calculations to give you an exact answer, but it would, it would reduce it by approximately two hundred thousand.
That much, okay. Okay. Uh, if there are no further questions, I can open this to public comment. Now I have one written, I have two written comments actually, but I'd like to hear, um, from the people either online or in the audience who want to comment on the, uh, on the question, if any, any of you do. Carlos, your staff. I get you.
I just wanted to make a couple of clarification from the questions. Uh, one, one is the deadline for a submission, submitting the grant is on the staff report, which is June first, it's not June thirty first, so. So just wanted to make that clarification. And also Cindy, uh, was correct on the twenty percent that is going to be held back, so that's, that's part of the grant, uh, application process is once we start construction, that can submit invoices and get reimbursed right away up to forty percent of our costs. The last twenty percent is going to be held until an inspection is done and everything is complete on the skate park, then we'll submit uh, those final invoices and then we'll get reimbursed for that, so that's, I think that's what Cindy was mentioning. Uh, I also wanted just to, uh, add or piggyback on uh, our finance manager's estimates and discussing it with, uh, our district engineer and skate Cambria, I, I think we're all comfortable with the one point two mil number. Uh, and there was a couple of, uh, really good things that came up from the last meeting to this meeting in regards to fundraising and obviously skate Cambria's here and CCC, but uh, they actually, so if you look at the staff report, there's a sort of a deficit of seventy two thousand to be able to make it up to the one point two mil. Skate Cambria has already raised that and a little more, so the, the matching funds are there to be able to apply for the one point two.
Okay.
So just wanted to, to put that out.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, that's a good clarification because it's, that's what, that was going to be an issue if we hadn't, uh, gapped it out. Public comment. Anybody in the, in the hall here who wants to comment, you have a three minute limit and, uh, you can speak up from your seat, because I think everybody can hear everybody. Okay, I have two written comments, uh, one that was, um, passed along uh, from Ms. Amadee and the other one is a short comment that came in, uh, from our website. I'll do the short comment first. It's from Linda Prentice. That says, I am outraged that you intend to spend our tax money to build anything with as many bathrooms as are required in an outdoor public use area as described in the skate park initial review. Specifically using my tax money from the five lots I own on Norwich, that won't be, that won't allow me to build, but you wouldn't allow me to build on, Linda Prentice. Uh, this is the letter, um, synonymous, this one, uh, that was to, um, to Julie Amadee, it passed on to us. My wife and I have lived in Cambria for almost three years. I'm retired with a civil engineering and aerospace design background and haven't, and have taken some interest in the skate park, both in the grassroots efforts to build this thing as well as the naysayers of the project. I've been reading on Nextdoor, recent comments on the skate park after this last storm and I have two comments. First, I moved from Oakdale, California about ten years ago and at that time, a local community skate park had been approved and funded and construction had just commenced. My thought at the time was, quote, this is just going to turn into blighted area with crime problems. Unclose quote. Construction lasted a couple of years at a location that provided some design problems. The finished product surprisingly turned out to be exceptionally well designed and aesthetically pleasing and the problems were mitigated. It filled some otherwise undesirable land with a beautiful skate park replete with appropriate landscaping and lighting for safety. It was located in one of the main streets in town and I think it gave it a high visibility to the community, passing by and encouraging less crime. On the occasional times I've driven past the Oakdale park, it has always been filled with skateboarders having a good time, day or night, with an apparent absence of bad elements loitering about. Observing Oakdale's setup has convinced me that Cambria's location has a real potential to be a community asset and that construction should proceed at, at the present site. Second, the problems with the slope behind the Cambria skate park can be resolved with common engineering solutions. No, an ordinary garden block wall won't be sufficient, but I'm sure the engineer has already addressed the safety of the children below and the impacts to any existing structures above the retaining wall. There are dozens of examples in town that show how similar slopes have been successfully dealt with. This is a good project for the community. Your committee has take, has talked the talk and walked the walk to push the project forward. This effort cannot go unrewarded, therefore my wife and I will be pleased to donate two hundred fifty dollars. Now he's talking, he's addressing skate Cambria, uh, to the cause. Thank you for the hard work you've accomplished. A can, Cambria community member who prefers remain anonymous. So those are the two written comments. And if there's no further, yeah, we'll have one from, um, sorry, the other board, Don, Don Howell.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I just have some questions in my mind, but to be understood, I'm probably in favor of this project, but I'm a little concerned. Often, a, a gift brings with it obligations beyond, you know, it's like you accept a donation or something, you have to obtain it, for example. So I'm a little worried that we could, the district could be getting into a position where it's like having a wolf by the ears. In that, what happens if there's a cost over there? How is that going to be made up? And, and this is a place where I can see the district getting trapped into having to put more, more resources into the project than had been originally planned in the early on discussions when we were talking about sharing the costs with that skate camp. So I just want to, I'd like to hear something about, and then to this committee, your, your opinion as to the effect upon our other operations by sequestering a significant amount of money. Uh, and especially this is general fund money, which means that if we run short, we can't raise the rates. There is no other source, so, uh, uh, how does the committee feel about, do we, do you feel that we have sufficient after sequestering the, the required amount? Uh, do we have enough to deal with the event and emergency? Or would it be a case where the, can the general fund, for example, borrow from the enterprise fund? So there really is no, we have the fire department who's looking for more money. Uh, there's a number of other situations here, so I'm a little concerned that we may be kind of wish. And that's always, I'm not against the project at all, I'd really like to succeed. But I'm a little concerned about by doing for this grant, that we put the district under obligations that may not be prepared.
How much are we talking about, Don?
Well, it's just to keep things in orderly, orderly, orderly procedure, uh, address, yeah, ask for it to be recognized by the chair. I, I think we can be sort of informal in our discussions here, but I think we do need to, uh, not get too off, off, you know, too much cross talks. The, um, but, and Mr. Howell does raise a, a very important point, part, part of the discussion about the, uh, MOU bears on it, the MOU, the intent of the MOU and, uh, the effect of the MOU is to limit our obligation to a hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars, period. Uh, design, construction, whatever, and we, we're capped at that, and this is the agreement with the, to get with, for people who haven't followed this very closely, we, our agreement is with the community council, because they're the ones that hold the money, they're, they're the actual nonprofit entity that holds the money and disperses the money raised by skate Cambria, so that is our agreement. Uh, and, and the other, other item within this item that we're going to take up after we, I think, make a decision about our recommendation on the, on the, on the, um, grant application is to, uh, look, look at that amendment to the MOU, which basically applies the same, the same overall limit, but it, you know, it has language that accounts for a situation where we get a grant. And otherwise, the over, the, the global limit of a hundred and seventy eight thousand is in there still. But we want to look at that, but it is, uh, the, the issue to me, if I had to, um, focus on one issue that is still a concern, is about the temporary, um, in, in somewhat indefinite, uh, lockup of a certain amount of money from our reserves, and this is why I asked a question about what, if we went with a lower, the lower grant, um, we would have less money set aside and restricted for a period of time, which would be maybe, uh, should we accept the grant, it would be something in three or four years perhaps. That's, that's the concern I, I see there and, um, yeah, we get the money back eventually, but there are things that could happen in the meantime that would be, that might put pressure on it. And the, uh, ad hoc committee that, that was just appointed, um, on, on reserve policy might want to have to look at what, what the state of the general fund reserves are going forward and which ones are, you know, if they're already spoken for uh, too much, that there's, if there's not enough play in those reserves to allow this, we, you know, we might have to look into that. But that was the issue that struck me as, as relevant to what Mr. Howell was saying. Any other comment? Uh, Carlos.
Yeah, I can sort of address a little bit about the contingencies and also the maybe co- cost overruns, if there are. So the engineer's estimate on staff report, at the end of it is, uh, one point zero two mil, but that includes a, a inflation of twenty percent, so a hundred and seventy thousand dollars was the inflation rate on that engineer's estimate. We're comfortable with the one point two, now adding another hundred and eighty thousand or whatever it is, in case there's any additional overrun, so there was actually a, a very large contingency in case there is anything that is of a surprise at this point, and that's why uh, I think Ray's comfortable with the one point two. Skate Cambria has already raised the matching funds, they're comfortable with the one point two. Uh, so staff is, is recommending at this point that the safer number is to go with the one point two.
Oh, Karen, Karen first then.
A quick question, is skate Cambria finished with fundraising?
Of course not.
No. Oh, you may, yeah, Ms. Amadee.
Yeah, um, we actually just came off a fundraiser, it was seven thousand dollars deposited to CCC, I can't pay breakfast. We have another fundraiser scheduled for May, um, in San Luis Obispo. We arranged the additional when the bar was raised very quickly from half a million to six hundred thousand and it can speak to that acquired difference. Um, we've got the pledges and assets to be able to meet that six hundred thousand, we have no intention to stop fundraising or not. But addition to that, we've also applied for another grant. Um, Carlos and I have worked on the Tony Hawk Foundation grant, skate park project. I would have loved to have submitted that grant two years ago, our former general manager did not support that effort. Carlos and I have already submitted it, we're in the queue with the Tony Hawk Foundation, the way that. Carlos and I have already submitted it. We're in the queue with the Tony Hawk Foundation. The way that works is quarterly. They'll be reviewing it. Their program coordinator, Andre Taylor, has the application. It's in the queue being considered. We don't know if it's 10,000. We don't know if it's 100,000, but I'm very confident it might be something. They give to parks, all different types of parks. They look sometimes specifically for parks that are in more high need areas. Um, but if you get a chance, pull up the Tony Hawk Foundation or State Park Project. They're known for these type of grants. And again, we would have applied for it two years ago. Um, but Carlos and I have already submitted. We've also got our eye on another grant opportunity that we were going to tackle on Monday, but he had a treaty we needed to take care of. So. We're going to get that rescheduled in the next week to start on, so I can answer to that. Thank you.
A question just with the fundraising, if, if you did meet your obligation for fundraising, you can't just grant for 600,000. Um. Can, and with the Tony Hawk grant and stuff, can we use that or set it aside for ongoing maintenance?
Absolutely. That was our.
They, they, yeah, they, Mr. Clark, yes, Mr. Clark.
What's happening is that we're going to be fundraising until we're done. Uh, we just got to be quid 10,000 dollars for the skate park. So that rocks off another.
Oh, I forgot about that.
Our goal is we're both taxpayers. We want to reduce that 178,000. Uh, the next MOU, the one after this probably, maybe we would have a. Item that we reduce your contribution to 128. We bring all our funds. What's happening is we're getting these charitable donations. We have to use them. Which reduces your part on the 178. Uh, I have visions of possibly the maintenance coming out of 178 that you just take how much you want to put away for future maintenance. And maybe roll it over to the, uh, post officials. But there's a lot of contingencies in that 1.2 million. You remember the original cost was 661,000 dollars. Then we moved it up to 1.002. The skate park, just the concrete and the gunite is only 285,000. We threw in, took that 285 to 350. Then we added another 20%. And now we've added another 180. So there's, I feel there's a lot of contingencies. If you go back through your policy. I think the district is well protected. That's our, I'd like to bring your, your part down, lower the 178.
Yeah.
Under 100, but that's our goal.
Uh, Cindy, and then I think that we'll try to wrap this up, wrap this part of it up and talk about the MOU a little bit, Cindy. Yeah.
And there, there's no, there's no question about the efforts that skate Cambria has put into fundraising and how successful. They and CCC have been and the continued way of planning towards those contingencies. And the part of the money is going to raise the money. To essentially make those, uh, none of that is quite true. None of that. The idea of having a skateboard is, is like, it's this particular circumstance. With the obligation that based on what funds are currently available through fundraising. And the 178,000 dollars, which is considered, I guess, even though it's held by CCSD and it's very money. It's considered part of what you're viewing as your fundraising. Um. There's a significant shortfall in playing that current position. And what we was meeting obligated against this. And whatever that short call is, which is. Significant at this point. Then. Our, our funds are. The flexibility of what are being able to use our reserves is significantly reduced. And there's risk associated with that. There's risk to CCSD. There's, we're, 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 something goes haywire and they need our money. From the general fund, which has happened, we'll do. Um, the risk is to the assets that they hold, the vet stall. The vet stall needs to be liquidated, needs to be rewire. It, you know, it has. It has issues. It has significant issues and there are ways that are being looked at to try to fund some of that. Through grants again. But. That won't necessarily come easily and it isn't as sexy as other things. So people have for decades set aside. The vet stall. Um. The. The, the idea of restricting. Our reserves to that extent and have an extended period of time, which they were continuing to be restricted. We're not going to get the other side of that coin and say, oh, the money's come back to us for years. So what's going to happen in those years before we need? To be able to apply our reserves to attention. They'll be restricted. We won't be able to, we'll be limited in being able to apply for other grants that have matching requirements. Because we would have consumed such a significant amount. In this one application, that if we had the potential, potential for a matching funds grant for the vet stall. But it, you know, it could be a limitation. It could be anything that might come to grant the fire department. So those things we're grappling with, we're not grappling with what's been accomplished. We're not grappling with the intent and we're not grappling with the ideas that there's, uh, there's a group of community that wants to help this happen. The other side of that coin is that we have assets within this community that benefit the community that's old. That the, you know, the end product of, of how it will be used and by whom and what are the consequences. Um, can be restricted potentially with the fire department, emergency services, the vet stall. And the number of things. That's what we're grappling with. The idea of that amount of money hasn't been set aside and restricted. To possibly, um, handling things like the storm damage that we just got through or the vandalism that we experienced out. At, um, at, um, so these sorts of stuff. Or what equipment you've replaced with that, right? The fact that the access road across the branch. Uh, really got chewed up in the rain. So probably need to surface that because it is an emergency problem. And that's what, that's what's at the core of questions that get asked.
Okay, I have a couple of thoughts too, but also, uh, uh, one of our attendees, zoo attendees wants to speak and I would, I want to put her on, Chelsea Foster. So, um. Again, as an extension of public comment, Chelsea, uh, Ms. Foster, can you hear me and can you, um, speak?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, please, yeah, please speak.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you, uh, Director Gray. Um. Just wanted to make a general statement here in listening to the newly, um, added approach to this, um, grant. Skate Cambria, when I came in to help on the project was already so proactive and that's a key word that I just wanted to state. Being proactive, um, is basically what's heading this project and it's what's making everyone so enthusiastic about the positivity that it's bringing. And although that's been stated several times before, when we're talking about emergency services or potential problems and. Um, everything that, you know, has just now recently been stated. Of course, nobody wants to take anything from the general fund to protect the community. However, when you have somebody or a group of people working so proactively together and pouncing on opportunities and making them happen so quickly. I would suggest that if anybody else has a project that they want to get involved in that they take the same approach. Because all of the grants and all of these opportunities that have made this project so successful is because of that key word proactive. Um, as Ms. Amadee said earlier, you know, we would have had the skate park project grant already aligned two years ago. Previous director and general man, I mean, sorry, general manager did not allow that. And I, not wanting to go in the weeds here, but there were definitely some funding questions that, um. Spending that was happening during that time around other, you know. Projects on the other side of the country that really had absolutely nothing to do with Cambria. So if we want to get into some really direct conversation about how funding gets allocated, I'm sure that we. Will talk about that, but to keep things high level right now, being proactive is why the project is where it's at. And I think that if there's other things that need to be attached or considered and grants, then go ahead, go take your table out and your bell every, every Friday. And, you know, ding it around and raise money because that's what these kids and what everybody and adults and everyone else is doing. So thank you so much, um. As always, very, very pleased to hear the progress and thank you for everyone in your time. Um. There's no doubt that this grant should be approved because it's only going to help the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Foster.
Yeah, uh, before going on, I want to, and before we take motions, I want to at least cover the MOU a little bit so we can know. What we're talking about there too. It's pretty simple. Uh, then we'll get back to, um, integral motions. Uh, the, you have copies, I think of the original MOU or the current MOU, I should say. In your packet and you also have a copy of the revised language. Uh, of one S of one part of it, which is section one C. Uh, just to, just to detail what the changes were. Uh, there were, there was language inserted in a couple of spots and I can tell you exactly where it is. I have a market version of it. Uh, the section one C starts, the representatives of skate Cambria have agreed that the cost of the design and permitting phases of the skate park project shall be shared equally between the funds to the invited district. And then in parentheses was added until they are exhausted, which means. We, the, um. The funding, the fund share of the, uh, uh, it's, it's allocated to CTC won't go beyond what it basically was, you know, supposed to be. Then it continues in the original and the funds raised by skate Cambria. Skate Cambria also understands that the bidding and construction phase of the skate park project is contingent upon and will not commence until all the funds. Necessary to construct the project have been raised and have been deposited with the council. That's in the original. This shall include funds sufficient to create a reserve fund for operation and maintenance of the skate park in an amount determined by the directors, district board of directors. As recommended by district staff. That's also in the original. This is new. The following, the reserve funds may be held by the district or the council, allowing the agreements to meet the needs of determined reserves. That's just moved up from another spot. Good, and this is the new, this is newer language. Should the district apply for and obtain grant funding for the skate park project? As determined by the district board of directors, said grant funds shall be used to develop project consistent with the grant terms and conditions. If the grant, if the grant requires matching funds from the district, those funds may be appropriated from either skate Cambria funds transferred and deposited with the district by the council. Or from any remaining unextended district funds previously committed to the project. Or a combination of either as determined by the district board of directors. So it's pretty straightforward. Uh, it's, um. Basically it, it makes it clear that the, any match that comes out of the, uh. From our side for the matching grant is out of that 178 and not addition to it basically. And that's going to be, that's clarified. And that's the language that we're looking at today, uh, that was prepared by our council. So any comments or questions on that? So we can have, I will entertain motions now on the two, these two aspects of this, of this item. First of all, on the question of what we recommend in the way of the grant application.
I, I don't think we're done.
We're not.
I don't, none discussed.
Okay, let's have more discussion.
Right. I can make a motion on the.
Okay.
Fine. Except that recommended the board of, uh. Uh, directors that they accept the amended MOU and.
On the S. I don't agree with the amount.
Do we have a second though? You need a second. It's taken by, uh, it's been moved by, uh. Many member, the person and seconded by, since I, vice chair since that L. That we accept the revision, uh, the amended revision of the MOU, recommend that to, to the board. And of course that will be, uh, sent to the board for renegotiation with, uh, CCC. Can I get a vote on that? Uh, but like, oh, discussion, sir.
What is the difference if this grant gets? Submitted, what is the difference between the 178 and how much the CCSD? How much more will you be needing to submit this grant? Can you give me an answer?
That's, you're trying to.
There are two different things here.
I think a vote on the MOU has specified 178,000.
Right.
That already had been approved.
This maintains.
It's where this is an amendment, addendum. Yes. Okay. I'd like to change the amount of the 178.
Yeah, because the board hasn't approved anything.
But we can go back to the board and submit a increase in MOU.
No, I thought you wanted increase the amount more.
I want this grant to go forward on the date that it has to go forward. And what is the difference?
Nothing. We don't need to, we don't need to do anything else because all we're doing, and that's the next. Is going to be saying that they should set aside in the reserves. Okay, to match the funds and go forward. We don't need to change anything in the.
You don't need to change the 178.
No, no, because that's, that's, that stays, that's fixed.
That'll be.
Uh, any other, yeah, any other discussion of this because we should discuss. Go through the discussion.
Then I'm a little confused on that.
Yeah, so all, all we're doing is we're saying 178 skate. We said we're gonna. Give that much money, okay? But with the grant, what we're saying is that we're going to hold money in reserve.
Correct.
Until we are reimbursed by the grant.
Correct.
So we're never spending any more than the 178.
But we may have to.
No, no, the, the MOU, the MOU says. The MOU is solid, is, is basically very, very firm on that. Says that our, our, our limit, our contribution to this project is limited at 178,000, no matter what. No matter what happens with the grant. Well, the board, the board of directors, they won't, could, but.
Three years now and they need another $3,000.
30 days from now.
No, that, that actually is not yet. That's. Right.
And there'll be sufficient funds.
Yes.
Yeah, the sufficient funds have been raised by CCP and skate Cambria.
Requires the district to say, we have sufficient funds to meet the obligation of this project.
Yeah.
Not that we have to actually give it to them. We just have to guarantee that we have it in our reserves. So. We have to hold on to it until we're either reimbursed by the grant as the project's going, will be reimbursed 80%. Or skate Cambria is transferring money from us, their, their.
See, I was under the impression with the application that you have to, um. Submit funds.
No, 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 we just have to, to ensure that we have. But, but the way that that's assured is that we. CCSD, we CCSD would be obligating. Our reserves as a set aside if for, for some reason everything went haywire. We're still going to be accountable.
Yeah, we're responsible for the project.
So that's the other, and that's, that's where the risk lies.
Any, any, yeah, any further discussion on the MOU question? So we don't get too far off.
There's no funds being submitted with the application.
Okay. There's no further discussion. I will ask for a roll call vote. Um. Uh, Mr. Chair. David, Dave. Hi, Cindy.
Hi.
Uh, Karen.
Hi.
Uh, Amy.
Hi.
And Cheryl. Uh, that motion, the motion proved to recommend, recommend, uh, recommend amendment of the. Uh, MOU in accordance with the, uh, recommendations given us by our, our council passes five O. Uh, now, uh, we probably should wind up the discussion as much as possible on the issue of what to recommend in the way of. That application.
So I have a couple more questions, I guess. The. 2.5 million reserves. Um, don't match up with the audit. Is that because there are restricted funds already in the general reserves?
This, this, um, this number is an estimate of where we will be at the end of this fiscal year, 22, 23. So it won't match up with the audit, which was 21, 22. I was trying to give the most current projections that I'm working off of when I'm looking at our reserve balances.
Okay, so. The latest budget though still says 3.5.
Correct, but there's a lot of things that have happened. There's, there's, there's things going on and I did not include the detail of. Where I got to that number and I do indicate, you know, this is a projection of where we will be at the end of the year based upon. Different. Different. That, different action items. I can detail that out for you, of where I got to that two point five million. But I did not just take the beginning of the year's estimate. Because the beginning of the year's budget does not include the, the board approves. The C I P list and the carryforwards after the budget is submitted for approval. So this number is after all of those things were included. You know, and that happens, sorry, I'm not super clear on the timing. So I think that's why it would be different and I can go into that a little bit deeper for you to get that, but.
At some point, I would like to have, it's not necessarily.
So also, this two point five includes the recent approval by the board to extend for the fire department. So that would be including those, because now those are committed funds.
Some of that was in the budget.
Correct, so this would reflect the parts that weren't in the budget, but also in um. In the budget, we also indicated that we were going to finance the fire engine. And they, and the board decided not to finance and pay cash. So that's, you know, approximately half a million dollars. So, um, that needs to be taken into consideration too, is because in the budget, we have the source. Of a lease or a loan for that and we're not going forward in that direction.
Okay. The reason we're at two point five is because we've taken care of a lot of fires, parkits.
That's part of the, large part of it, yes.
Um, so I, personally, I think the two point five million is, is a good number. And is sufficient. Even subtracting the monies that we would have to, what I quote, restrict. It will still be above the minimum of the budget. And again, it's, it's our, our. Uh, time coming up to look at the next budget and to look very hard at expenditures. And I think also at some point, I think it's duty of this committee to start looking at some of these funding. Uh, areas that we need to look at, uh, to take care of the fire department and that's all. That have been pointed out by other uh, committees, subcommittees of this group, hand at the. Uh, strategic plan that we need, another source of revenue to cover the general fund. And we really need to get at that and start looking at where we're going to get those months. So, um, I personally think we're in good shape as far as that goes. We still have over one point six, as you said. Money is left in the reserve, we have to do construction. And we'll look at the next budget, make sure. Uh, excessively draining that, that fund, not on a rainy basis. And uh, I, I, I will wait for the discussion, but you know, my, my. Will need to go ahead and.
Any, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, um. The, the labor expense um, for the past year, I'm sure will be in excess.
Labor for.
A budget for the facilities. Uh, area on private park as well, considering the support actions. That we'll have to find on during the storm.
Um, you know, I would really have to do an analysis to see where we are if the overtime was larger than we see in other times. I think that our fire department has had some staffing leave and so we have had some, you know, vacancies that it might have offset that. And so I would have to do an estimate, see where we've been in years past and compare to the budget as well.
The general question related to the availability of funds, clearly, if a concern of something comes up. It's a need that many of the dress, what are options for borrowing a fund? You mentioned, say, uh, board decree not to finance a half million dollar fire engine cost. Obviously, when you're buying an asset like a vehicle or something like that, it's still easy to get a loan. It clearly that was a decision not to, do we have that opportunity to replenish general funds should something come up, say, that that tall needs a. New roof tomorrow or, well, it's not even that expensive, but I don't know. See, it's a priority to redo the bet all. And we borrow money for that.
I think there's an opportunity to borrow money. There's a project, like a project on the table and there's a need. A need, um, and like Tom or David's just, we're going, we're going through the budget cycle now, I'm sorry, in that process. And um, you know, this is my first year doing it and Miss Duffield has trained me on it, so we're going to be going forward, but. We're going to be really diving into that and requests, and I think requests from generals on may. You know, we'll definitely have to take a harder look at exactly what they're asking for until, you know, this obligation is met and we can get. You know, release this, this hold on, if you go forward with this, release the hold on money that we're committing to this.
Based on that, my, my comment and feeling, um, you thought proceeds to move this forward and get it going, obviously, there are risks with the timeline, but at some point. You know, if you're looking at plane ticket or committing to something in advance, you must commit, you don't know everything, but I'd like to see this.
I think we need to entertain a motion because we can also debate the motion, but uh, somebody has to come forward with a proposal.
I'd like.
Okay.
Proposal that we move forward to commit the funds.
Or.
Submit the grants.
Move forward, I guess, I guess the wording of it, yeah, um. And yet make sure you're specific about the amount of money too. Um, let me see what it say. I guess you would be uh, you, uh, you move that the C C S D. Move forward with applications for the state park grants. Based on a project cost of one million, two hundred thousand dollars. That'd be how you sort of. Grant application, basically. Yeah, yeah, a matching grant application based on that project cost of millions, two hundred thousand. I think it was seconded by um, Carol Madell.
So I just have.
Move, move in a second, so you have a discussion.
The, I, I, I support this, but I'm concerned with the house on risks. And um, there, there are a number of risks, I don't know. The, the difficult reasons that we're in a, we're in a position of not having information balance. The impact of what Spain suggests here against. The, the um, balance of the general fund. Uh, reserves. I think that the Hillside integrity is one. That, that's, that's a risk because we don't know until it's worked out. I think the height of the current wall for that skate park, which is only four feet, is probably suspect. On the basis of how neighboring properties were affected by, and, and the level of. Uh, walls that they have and those. I think from, and that's specific, those are specific to the skate park, the facilities. Um, has to do with the storm damage and vandalism. And probably need forced to expand security features that were identified as some vandalism that went on. And um, and quick placements compares to the, to the storm and as well as great failures. And on the ranch properties, uh, with storm cleanup, you know, that there's a lot of cost as well with that, unfortunately. Um, we have benefited of our peak sharing costs and that, so that probably isn't a big risk. So, but I do think that there's potential for that repaving, I mean, which is a low cost of ranch.
If we want to do that, we should apply for funds from FEMA.
Yeah, we are.
I think, and yeah, my intent here is that I'm just trying to identify areas and the main way to. Pursue matching or obtaining funds for it, but. Because we don't have a number, because we haven't done things that are so outstanding. Eventually have uh, limits to um. Grant additional, uh, potential grant for matched funds that continues to complete the general fund reserves. And one of those problems in my own mind is, is the availability of potential brand matched funds for that some. Now, there is a, there is an ad hoc that has been formed as far as the vet. Looking into those things, so that's separate.
Don't want to think, we don't want to get things too far off here because, yeah, there, there are a number of things that are. Number of issues that are circling around the question of reserves. And I think we want to focus on reserves maybe going forward. I'll just say briefly, um, in, in distant preference to any vote we take. Our job as a finance, finance committee is somewhat not the most pleasant one sometimes because we are sort of the watchdogs of the fiscal health of this district going forward. And we have to be careful and always, and always cognizant of whether we're taking on any risk or we're looking, say, we're looking at unintended consequences. Of things that people are very enthusiastic about, uh, a lot of communities support for, but do we have? In context of all the other things we have to do, especially with our general fund, are we making the most prudent decisions so that? You should never be afraid to do something somewhat unpopular in the cause of fiscal sobriety and fiscal soundness. With that said, I don't know if there's any more comment or any more debate. I want to just maybe call for a vote. Anybody, um, so I'll call for a vote? Yes, Karen.
Can I say something first?
Sure.
Mr. Howell's comment crystallized what I had been thinking. I've been given some comfort by the response of Skate Camry and my question of your continuing fundraising. And I'm making an assumption that regardless of how this vote goes. Tom, you will, as part of your report to the board. Make this discussion noted and they won't believe you just voted and.
Oh, yeah, definitely. It's part of that, that's, that's a part of the job of, of the chair. Um, part of the board is the, our excellent secretary. It was very, very thorough minutes. Yes, we, the board will know about this discussion. They'll, they'll know about the points that were raised. I think that's a very good point. With that said, I'll call for the vote, uh, Ms. Wyatt.
Yes.
I, um, Mrs. Dowell. Um, Ms. Person.
I.
Ms. Stidell. Hey, and Ms. Christian.
I.
Hi. The motion to um, recommend that the board of directors. Apply for the matching fund grant, matching grant in the um, for the skate park project in the. For, for, based on a price, based on a total cost of million, two hundred thousand, passes by a vote of four ayes, one nay. Vice Chair Sidell voting nay. And no abstentions. Thank you. Thank you for the very productive discussion and uh. Very productive and, uh, I think very knowledgeable. Uh, I don't know, we need a short break. We have about, we have about thirty five minutes and we have at least one fairly substantial, a couple substantial items to get through. Maybe a short break, maybe thirty minutes, just, just a stretch. We can be. I don't, um, just, just so I, I know, I don't, um, Pam, Pam was still out there. Before I reconvene, I want to make sure our, the microphones weren't on. Were you hearing all that chatter, Pam?
Yes.
You did?
Yes, I heard it.
You did, unfortunately. So, because I don't know which ones were, you know, I was, I'm, I'm not muted now.
No, I can't hear anything.
Let's, uh, let's reconvene. We're still being, uh, unrecording, I think. We're back, yeah. I think we actually, you know, I want to go to. Three, this is the item three B, which is the um, reports. From the Subcommittee on Budget Policy Review. This is not an action item. We're not going to be taking, um, you know, a vote on anything. But we want, I think, to hear the report of their progress so far and to um, give them feedback as to where to, how to go forward. Uh, and, and I guess I also would preface this. Uh, and, and I guess I also would preface this by saying, this is not, this is not action that's going to be ta- taken, that's going to affect the budget this year, the twenty three, twenty four budget. We're talking about policy that will be, um, applied, I assume, to second, next year's budget. So I think, David, were you going to, were, do you want to re, um,
Yeah, I do.
Report? Yeah, good. David, Chris.
Whenever you're ready to start the meeting, we'll have to unmute yourself. I didn't want everyone to hear all that traffic.
I'm unmuted now. Yeah, I'm muted now. Thank you, Kate. Thank you, Kelly. Okay, stay only proceed.
We didn't have a need. But I don't have an idea to more. This really, I have one because plan need again, uh, but we want to get something in front of you guys. Uh, this time, just let me look at it, give us feedback before we have. Go from there.
You did meet, you did meet once, Tim.
Yeah.
You met once. You had a meeting with, uh, Denise. Yeah, you had one meeting. So you just now the second one. One, sorry.
So we're, we're all looking for. Comments.
Okay.
So that we can take them back to our next meeting and need to work on.
Okay, so I just had one comment and when, um, and I think I sent out a, uh, little note to the committee members that the, um, uh, on the, the table that you have of the, um, allocations. I wanted to make sure people understood that, you know, there was a last week, last month, we had the current allocation table in our agenda as part of the budget policy. So that you can make a comparison if you, if you want to compare it to the current one, all you need to do is go back to our, um, budget of last month, which shows you the actual allocations that are now in effect. And, um, right now Denise is passing out a, uh, another, um, document having to do with the allocation of property tax. So maybe we can discuss that. Those are the only two things I wanted to know. Any, yeah, any people have any questions or comments, uh, from the board? To, um, the report that was submitted is, uh, attachment. Attachment three B A. And actually, there's one marked up and one not marked up. There's both the same content, so one has the, uh, changes. The three B attachments. Yeah, Karen.
This is the comment. This has nothing to do with content. So in the middle of the, of the page, in the two line paragraph, starting each year, site ministry spending, there are four bullet point, uh, three bullet points above. Leaving one of them from the previous. Hope the rest of the discussion goes.
I wanted to maybe, maybe I asked Dave to explain what has changed, uh, in this, how is this, where are the different, where are the points, the key points of difference between this and the current policy?
Well, the current policy was very confusing, the fact that they did have more voice, but the speed on the allocation, they only have three allocations, uh, E, L, and R. So what I did was I basically said, okay, let's really define what E is, L is, and R is. And then there was really nothing that told you how they calculated the percentages for L and R. You know, E was very straightforward. It was equal percentage across the board.
Mm-hmm, right.
So I said, well, there's got to be some way to get to this L distribution and your R distribution. So I came up with, you know, an idea. Okay, it's not a final idea, but it's some ideas to, okay. I said, these are the, 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 the allocation is based on administrative resource and youth, right? So I said, here are the administrative functions, the general manager, billing, accounts payable, payroll, and those are basically people, right? Finance manager, legal. And legal is, and the reason I factored in the, because the general manager basically is two times the cost of a, um, going in about conceivable person, somewhere to find a strategy. Legal is, uh, based upon budget costing about three times. So I said, okay, let's just throw those factors and then how much each of them is used on each of the different areas. I just, you know, a whack. Based upon what I knew from my few, few years on the board and from what people had told me, first is on payroll. Fire is a very complex thing because they have so much overtime, they have so many people that are in and out doing this, doing that, all that. So that payroll is very complex. When you're payrolls are not. So I over, uh, factored, uh, fire on that. Okay. And because of that, I also put a little extra on the finance manager for fire because I imagine the payroll takes her time loss. Um, but these are, these are numbers that the general manager will really along with the finance manager, you know, figure those out and put those factors in there and come out there. The percentages and stuff. I'm just trying to give a guideline as to some methodology for coming up with L percentages that makes some sense. Okay. I did not use, I did not quit the HR and the board secretary in there. But I didn't do that because those I guessed were going to be strictly right across, you know, everybody right across the board. So maybe that money should come out of L costs and go into E costs. You get it. Well, same.
Yeah.
That was an idea that went through my head. Okay, maybe not. So maybe we should add those people also as administrative functions, the board secretary and H R I T as, as other things to be back. On our costs, I said, okay, let's base this on two different things. One is full top for eating. And the other is the amount of money that they spend within a year, which is going to, you know, mean that there's, okay, there's more purchase orders going through, there's more, um, you know, allocations, there's more, you know, expenditures going out. So I took the two of them. I took out, obviously, I took out of the expenses, um, capital expense because that's usually a one-time thing and that can be huge or very small. So we should keep that out. And also I took out the allocation because that would be iterative. So I said, what are the new expenses from a given year that I, that's what I use. And I'll be, I'll, I'll send out the Excel spreadsheet that I use. Well, yes. So you can look at that also. Um, but you know, that was just my idea of, okay, let's, you know, allocations based on something else other than straightforward or factors. So that's what I came up with.
Definitely.
You know, maybe you want to get rid of our entire. And, and, you know, just go with L and E. Um, but that's something that we can discuss. We had often.
Any other, and abuse of other, I don't know, committee members, so we can get.
We spent some time going over the, the, uh, the cost allocation names, so they match the budget. There was a little bit of discrepancy as far as I put matching policy to the budget. It was, it was, uh, yeah, a few clarify. Changed since. That was, that was all.
Yeah.
And, uh, I mean, I know from Dave on yours, on the, on the first first field here, most of the percentages are fairly close, but in a couple of cases, there's a big discrepancy between fire, this is on the left face, the R cost allocation. Fire has a, a high head count to lower percentage of expenses. And then the W R F has low head count and higher percentage of expenses. So it's quite a discrepancy there. I imagine that would be particular cause for further discussion as far as what the blend. I think he just took an average. He has like those percent which should give first step, but, probably time to spend. That might be a question. Okay, thank you for doing that.
The only points.
No, I thought it was very good. I thought it was very good.
I, um, what I like, um, that, that, that you guys have been, David's done is if, you know, you're unpacking, I was, I'm looking at the current allocation, um, in the, in the L cost in the L category. And all they, all they did up till now is take this huge number of personnel services, which is all of the, basically all the salaries pretty much except for legal counsel and office rent and things. Million five hundred and twenty-three and just, and just do a straight percentage allocation to each department. I like the, I like the administrative function breakout idea. Because I think that's where you get at what, what kinds of functions, I see, you mentioned payroll and fire, for instance. What kinds of functions tend to be spent more on, on what areas? And that, that is a good thing. I don't know how, I don't know if the numbers, um, the percentages themselves are, are, are certainly not last word. I think the concept of it, I like of, of having more functional running just as this amorphous budget of personnel, all the administrative personnel distributed up without any, you know, any correction or adjustment for what, who does what for whom, which is important. I don't know. Denise, did you want to have me say anything about this? Because you were the, um,
Uh, no, I mean, I think it's, and I think it's a good, um, methodology or, uh, you know, suggestion, approach to methodology. What I would, I mean, and I think we've all agreed this is not, these changes are not going to be for the twenty
Right.
three, twenty-four budget. Um, and so what I would like to do is apply this to our real world numbers to see where we would end up. Because we've all agreed to that our general fund, um, or our funds are limited for our general fund, such as F and R and, but any, and you know, for certain extent even our utilities, right? We're under a certain rate structure, um, to see, so we have to be mindful of how it affects them. We can't change it so dramatically that it will be burdens a department that is not burdens. Um, so I would like to run, you know, real world numbers, then we can have that discussion and see where we can make adjustments or maybe if the, um, this, the committee may have some other ideas about ways we could do it and run a few scenarios. And then, uh, so I guess my point is I don't think it needs to be a quick discussion. I think it's something that the committee can keep talking about and really then run the real world numbers, bring it back and keep having that and hopefully, um, we're going to bring something to the board in time to get it for the twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah.
But I mean, I think this was a great start. I can work with to, to run a scenario to see what, what it would actually look like for the.
Yeah, I saw, uh, yeah, I like the, yeah, as, as far as a template goes, then we, we focus on function. Is a good way to, then you can, then you can refine the numbers within that template. I think.
Yeah, and I, and I didn't do much analysis because I was, I wanted to, and Dave, you explained it and some understanding it a little bit better about where you numbers and stuff. And so I can always reach out and ask questions while I'm working through it. Um.
Yeah, so I think we should have a meeting with the ad hoc committee, um, and yourself, of course. Maybe in the next. Well, I can't do it next week, week after that.
I would have to look at my schedule and see, um, I do have some, I mean, like, starting the budget process and, and we have some board meetings. Getting into the board meeting weeks and such, but yes.
I think.
I should be able to.
Think it's sort of on the same, maybe on the same time for this last evening, so much, somewhat early in, early in the period between now and the next meeting, so we can have a report. Uh, this report was a little late, unfortunately, as I think that. I think that's something.
Yeah, I'm just going to write it down.
Right. I think it'd be good. Yeah. Any, this, it just opens up a little bit. Any public comment from our audience? Well, we have, we have two, we have two attendees, I assume, too. We're welcome to, um, comment on this. During that, I guess we'll, oh, thank you. Uh, I think this is, you, you know, had a very, very productive start, uh, in this process.
Yeah. I just, I can't, yeah, to agree with all the comments that I made. And it's, it's great. It's, um, the interesting part will be to, uh, also establish the, um, structure of when, when to consider making shifts. Because I feel the real sensitivity is what Denise said, where we have rates that are in place based on certain things. So for the utilities, I don't know if that meets certain categories of cost that once that's fine, that holds during the period that the rates remain in effect or something. I, I don't know whether that's even a practical approach, but at least it's, it's something that's a consideration and always part of the process.
And there's one other item that Denise handed out, uh, earlier, earlier in the meeting relevant to the committee and had to do with the income, income allocation for property tax. So maybe we could just briefly explain the changes.
That is, I think we agree that we can't change that allocation to, so what my, my goal with rewriting it was to make it a little more clear, to take out some of that language. Um, because I don't think any one of us was able to really find what is the methodology behind these numbers. Um, I did do some, some calculations based upon what we're about. If we looked at expenditures and, and that sort of thing. And it kind of came out, uh, some of it was more like, uh, you know, for size and department. So I, so I couldn't, so I just tried to clear up the language and be a little bit more transparent with here are the percentage that is that we are using. Um, so, so that's clear. So this is not like David's report, we are, we're actually looking at the methodology and, and seeing the ways that we can change it or make it. This is more just, this is what we're doing and trying to be a little more clear with our language and taking out words like arbitrary.
The main, the main change, uh, for, for those who don't see this, I'll hand out there, this is the budget policy, uh, and there was a line, um, under income allocations, that allocation of profit taxes is arbitrary, which, you know, it's kind of, kind of a negative comment. And also, uh, the, a little chart, Denise's chart showed the actual distribution of property taxes. Fire Department gets seventy point sixty-seven percent, seven oh point six seven. Facility resources gets twenty-six point forty-eight percent. Pros gets one point ninety-two percent and the low income, which means that's the, that's the, um, funding for the, the, right now, it's, it's the sewer customers that get a little break on their sewer bill who have a, or in lower income category. That's a point ninety-three percent. So those numbers are added. Yeah, right. That's a twenty-five thousand anyway. But thank you. For no other comments or discussion, just I want to move on to the next item of business. And actually, there's two related items of business. Two, uh, three D and three E. In, first, I'd like to ask, um, make a request to extend the meeting to fifteen minutes, eleven fifty now. I think we can get done in twenty-five minutes, twelve fifteen. If there's no objection, um, I'll extend the minute. Yeah. You now, by now's consent, we extend the meeting, uh, time to twelve fifteen. Uh, the next item is, um, treaty. Discussion and consideration to amend the wastewater fund, general fund, inter fund repayment agreements with recommendations of the board. I'll ask, um, Pam Duffield to, uh, present this. Pam.
Sorry. Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yep, I hear you. Have we heard, have we heard Pam? Yep, we hear you.
Okay, perfect. So if you recall, um, back in two thousand and eighteen, the board adopted an agreement between the general fund and the wastewater fund for an inter fund loan. There is an agreement and a payment schedule that was adopted and the pay schedule was paying this loan off, uh, because of the shunting funding shortfall over a five-year period. And that loan repayment was to begin in, on June thirty, twenty nineteen, in the eighteen, nineteen fiscal year. Um, unfortunately, the general fund and wastewater fund had to incur an additional amount of inter. Um, unfortunately, the general fund and wastewater fund had to incur an additional amount of inter fund loan. Uh, because the wastewater fund did not balance at the end of fiscal year sixteen seventeen, as well as what was recorded through fifteen sixteen. So those additional funds have never been memorialized in the agreement. The agreement was never amended. Um, for that. And then, um, the first year of the repayment, the wastewater fund still wasn't solvent enough to. Uh, make that entire payment of a hundred and two thousand. So this is basically to clean up what has happened and record the actual loan amount. The actual payments that have occurred and what the remaining loan balance is. So you'll see. Um, on the top of page thirty-three of your packet. You will see the recap of what really has occurred. So, um, on June thirty, twenty nineteen, you'll see. That represents fiscal year eighteen nineteen. You'll see what payment wastewater did make. And then moving forward until what we anticipate will happen in June of this year. Um, we assume they'll make their full payment. And then at that point, there would be a remaining balance left over. So we really need to, uh, memorialize all of these transactions and get this to the board. So that we can move forward, um, with the budget process as well, because we need to put this loan repayment in the budget. Um, and we need to memorialize what would be due in June of twenty-four and June of twenty-five. So that's the information here. Unfortunately, um, the wrong attachment got put in here. Um, I did have in there the loans, the actual agreement that the board adopted, which was a two percent a year of interest. Um, based on the actual balance at the end of the fiscal year, and then that was to be paid over five years. So, um. I can bring up that agreement if you'd like. I can share my screen. I don't know if you'd all be able to see it or not. But that document is available.
Uh, yeah, we don't have a, we don't have a, a big screen here. We just have a little laptop. So it's kind of hard to. I could probably turn it around. If it's available. I mean, I think.
Well, it's, it's essentially, uh, it's essentially the draft of the attachment within the, the inter fund loan policy, which is attached to the next with, it's. It's just not the executed document. So.
It's a sample loan document filled in then, right?
Yes, correct. Right.
Yeah. Unless, unless there's some, you know, legal reason we have to have that in front of us. It sounds like we have all the information we need. Uh, to go forwards. I don't think we need it. Yeah.
Yeah. And it's all outlined in the table that I have in the staff report. The first table that you see. Um, in the beginning of the discussion on page thirty-two, that is right out of the loan agreement that the board adopted. And that is the payback schedule. And then I noted that additional funds in that very next table that they, that the, uh, wastewater fund needed to borrow the additional hundred and eighteen thousand that they needed. And then moving forward, um. On the page thirty-three is what we would need to amend that agreement to look like. Not even additional few years.
So that is, uh, yes, that gets to another of the, uh, what we have to deal with today. Basically, your recommendation, uh, and if you stated your six, ten, the loan repayment terms to June twenty twenty-five. And essentially, uh, be, and with the numbers as shown in those highlighted lines, is that basically what we're doing?
That's correct.
And, and just simply, uh, basically updating the loan agreement, revising the loan agreement accordingly.
Right. Cause at the end, on the first table that you see, um, with the original loan agreement, that it was, it was expected that the loan would be paid off at the end of this fiscal year. In twenty-two, twenty-three. And just because additional funds were needed to be loaned and the first year's debt service payment was not made in full. Um, the balance will not be zero at the end of this fiscal year. And the board was aware of that, and so was the finance committee, uh, because the board had made, I, I think, um. Even David Pearson was on the board at this time. Uh, the board had, you know. Made it known to the community and to staff that if wastewater did not end the year, you know, with a surplus, that no funds would be. Paid over to the general fund. Cause essentially if, if wastewater ended the year. You know, in a deficit or, or equal with a very little balance. Um, they would have still had to, you know, if they paid the loan in full. Then that would have created an additional loan required from the general fund. Cause the wastewater, the enterprise funds are not allowed to be in a negative cash state. At the end of any fiscal year. And if they are, there has to be reconciliation to that. So. It, it wouldn't have helped to pay the loan in full on the first year and create another amount of loan to them.
We have to have a loan to pay the loan.
Right. You're right. It just didn't make sense. So the board agreed that when the audit was complete and for that fiscal year in eighteen nineteen. If there was any surplus, then that amount of surplus would be, you know, paid to the general fund. And you can see that at the top of page thirty-three. They had a small surplus in June of eighteen nineteen of thirty-two thousand that could be applied towards the loan balance.
So, uh, any more questions? Any questions from Pam? Um, David first.
No, I don't have any questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is just, I, I, I don't, I don't see this as an issue, but I just wanted to draw your attention to any of that. There's some kind of, um, adjustment we need. Um, if we go to the initial, uh, loan layout, if we go to the June thirty, twenty twenty-one. Payment of, um, two, interest five nine two five and principal of nine six eight one six. If we go to the chart on the next page that has the payment schedule. That same time period, the interest is rather than five nine two five is nine six nine seven. And the principal, uh, is, was previously stated as nine six eight one six. And in the second term is nine three zero four five. Now, I, you know, I don't know what particulars were on that or whether there's potentially some adjustment between interest and principal accounts on some way. On that, but, um. I just wanted to draw your attention to, um, in the, uh, to the chance that there's any kind of that needs to happen in that or clarification.
I don't think that affects our, wouldn't affect our action today, though, would it?
No, it doesn't. The recording on the top of page thirty-three is what actually occurred. So there was a little bit of variance in principal and interest as a result, um, the audit.
It doesn't restate what you put forward in the new schedule. I, I understand that. I just, you know. There was any reason to, I understand.
Right. The table on the top of page thirty-three is that actual principal and interest payments that were made against the loan.
Okay, good.
I move that we, uh, amend the board that they amend wastewater fund, general fund, your, um, prepaying agreement. Uh, as recommended by.
Second. Uh, so moved by, uh, many member Pearson and again by Vice Chair Sidell that the. That we recommend, um, set the CCSD board, uh, amend the wastewater fund, general fund, inter fund repayment agreement as recommended by staff. Um, take a roll call. Mr. Pearson.
Hi.
Sidell.
Hi.
Uh, Chrisman.
Hi.
Wyatt.
Hi.
It's John. We got, hi. The motion passes five to zero. Moving on to agenda items. Three G, three, uh, E. Which is, um, another similar situation, uh, present, uh, please Pamela, please present this one. We will go from there.
Sure. Item three E is discussion and consideration of the water fund, general fund, inter fund repayment agreement with recommendation to the board. So this is a, a similar but different situation. Um, this is related to an old loan. And we, we somehow with the help of President Dean's memory, um, found the staff report. It was kind of amazing. So this is, goes back to, um, September of two thousand and nine. So there was a loan to, from the general fund to the water fund. Um, for some matching funds required for the Army Corps of Engineering, um, diesel, desaline and. Desaline pro, project and their geotechnical investigation at the Santa Rosa Creek Beach area. So there was initially a loan of a hundred and sixty-six thousand. And at the end of that fiscal year, wastewater did, or sorry, water did pay back, um, eighty-two hundred of that balance. So that hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollar balance has been recorded on our audits ever since. Two thousand eight, two thousand nine. And so it took a little bit of work to get back to what that loan was for. I, I did find in the staff report back from two thousand and nine, there is a resolution. But the, and I've attached that in your packet. So the resolution just states that this would be treated as a loan. There was never a formal payback schedule, or it didn't, you know, record what the interest rate was to be paid back. It didn't have a payback date or anything that I could find. So I, I simply. In this table here in the middle of the page, um, I just applied the same logic that the board approved for the wastewater loan. Assumed whatever that balance is, two percent a year of that unpaid balance. So that's how we come upon the forty-four thousand dollars in interest. Um, we would have to create the same type of, um, inter fund loan agreement, just like wastewater has, um. Once your committee agrees to our assumptions here. Um, we would have to create that same type of document and then move that forward to the board for repayment. This would also require i- if the board decides that they want this payback in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Like it's mentioned on the table here, we'd pay it in full. Uh, there would need to be a budget adjustment to amend the water's budget to include this debt service payment.
Thank you. Uh, any questions? Ms. Duffield.
So I'm curious with a resolution having been passed for to be treated as a one. Only this is not reference to interest. Um, if we take the approach now to associate. Interest with it for a higher payment. Is there anything, I mean, basically we're going against the grain and put a resolution of the board. So what, what's, what's the impact of that? Do we have to take an action?
I, I just recognize the difference.
That's what was, that was going to be.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that too. Is it two percent, is the two percent, uh, an arbitrary figure? Do we have to have interest on, on a loan? Inter fund loan, is it, is it required?
So I, I made the assumption that. We would have the same interest rate that was applied to the wastewater loan, which is two percent.
Yeah, we don't have to.
You don't have to. So.
They have to pay back this with interest.
Correct. So, so just, just so that everybody's aware, since I won't be here the next time you have this discussion. Um, when the general fund loans to the enterprise, there is no requirement by law that you have to charge interest. But if the enterprise funds were to loan the general fund or wastewater was to loan water or water was to loan wastewater. There absolutely is a legal requirement to charge interest.
So what you're saying is that this is the general fund loan to the water fund. So it, and I'm, I'm really asking, there's no legal requirement for it. Does it cause any sort of audit complications to have an interest to, to forgive the interest?
No, it doesn't.
Yeah.
But it, it just seems like, why would you charge wastewater interest and not charge water interest?
I know it's. Big difference in time.
You are too. Yeah.
And, and I can't, I didn't go back and listen to the recording and all the discussions of the board. We could probably go back and listen to that board meeting and see if interest was discussed. I just don't, I don't see it memorialized anywhere, what the payback schedule was and what the timing of that payback would be.
I, yeah, I think, uh, thank, yeah, if there's any furthers, any, 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 um, public comments. Any public comment from the online attendees? Okay, well. Uh, so I.
I just have. I just have a suggestion. Let's have anything to do with. When. When there is an inter fund loan, that's, and you've got that document. And you're filling in the information, add something on the last page that reports resolution number. It would, it would make things a whole lot easier for people going forward.
So, so not all, so the inter fund loan that is between the general fund and the wastewater fund was not done via a resolution. It was just an, it was an agreement. If you look at that document, it is not done on a resolution. It's, it's just an inter fund agreement.
Again, this is just, just going forward. This isn't anything as. I, I think as practice that might be required.
That, that, that's something we might want to review inter fund loan policies at some point too, though. Not, not now. I mean, cause we're reviewing policies, just fine. I, I entertain a motion. Oh, gone, first, public comment.
An observation. I seem to remember that in the last grade setting. Uh, the payoff of this loan was included in that. And so I would wonder if that payoff that was included in Alex Taylor's analysis included the interest or not. I don't suggest that if it did include the interest, that I'd just as well go forward and retain. Or you, you might not need, but anyway, I think it might be useful to know that.
Pam, do you have an answer to that question?
I don't know that the water loan was included. I, I, I would have to look back. We did include the wastewater component to pay back the general fund, but I do not know if in the water's rate setting that that was included or not.
I think, uh, I'm corrected. It, it was wastewater.
It was wastewater, yeah. Cause we didn't have, we, we didn't do this research and we didn't have any information. We don't have a loan repayment schedule or anything to go with. So. I, I'm not sure that that would have been included in our, in our rate setting.
Okay, thank you. Uh, other intended motion. Uh, Ms. Pearson.
Uh, I, I move that we recommend to the board that they, um. Consider it approved, the water fund, general fund, there's one repayment agreement. Uh, as, uh, stipulated by the staff with the exception that these interests. I'm willing to be for David.
Your second. Second, Vice President, Vice Chair Sidell, second is, um, my motion by, uh, committee member David Pearson. Uh, call a roll, uh, David Pearson.
Hi.
Oh, make a discussion.
No.
Oh, hi. Cindy, Karen.
Hi.
Amy.
Hi.
Cheryl.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes five zero. Thank you, everybody. Um, we have one more little, little item on the agenda, which is future agenda items. Does anyone have anything they want to suggest in this one? Now.
Can we be preventing the budget?
Yes.
At our next move?
No, well, it'll, I think that the, when I use it on.
The next meeting is going to be April twenty-fifth, I believe. The next meeting is going to be April twenty-fifth, I believe you. And it's a good time to get a first look at stuff, because it.
I think so, but she, yeah, she'll tell me one. Uh, we're reviewing the third quarter budgets on April twenty-fifth, and then I believe the preliminary budget will be on May.
On the May agenda.
Is next month.
The third quarter report, okay.
Yeah, so for this part, and that.
I don't think we have any further agenda items. June, goes to June, yeah, preliminary.
No, I would like at some time on the agenda. Discussion of, um, how we are going, um, find more funding.
I didn't hear the end.
Oh, find more funding in general. Uh, there are several, you know, um, yeah, I mean, we could, we could put it down as a, as a suggestion. I think we should have, you know, should look into that, have to go back to the board to see what kind of, what direction we get. But yeah, it's, it's a huge issue because we have, um, fire, um, with a year and a half to go on their safety grant. About ten hundred sixty thousand dollars, I think, um, the hole opening up, uh, facilities and resources seems to be. Getting ever more pressure to spend money on, in, on maintenance, but also on issues they have with their, their facilities. So, and then we have the Vets Hall, so we have a lot of things piling up, so we have to deal with it, so it's good, good suggestions. Um, anything else from the board? No, I, I, I. Without any further, without any further, uh, discussion, or, meeting is adjourned.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.